I'll open the planning board meeting for the town of Mooresville this evening. Welcome you all to it. With that, Ms. Campbell, would you open us in prayer, please?
Let us pray. Father, we want to thank you tonight for this is a day that you've made. We all shall rejoice and be glad in it. We thank you, Lord, for the new members that have come aboard. We thank you, Lord, for giving us the mind to make the right decisions concerning the growth of this town. We thank you for positive growth. We thank you, Lord, that you've already gone before us and made the cricket places straight. Thank you, Lord, for your many blessings. We give you all praise in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. If you'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
For the allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again for your attendance of our planning board meeting tonight. I would like to, first, before we give you the welcoming statement, I'd like to welcome our new members. We have Laura Temple and we have Mr. Greg Perez, who didn't make it tonight, but will be, I think, at our August meeting. And with that, we'd also like to take a moment to recognize Mitchell Abraham, who'd stepped down now from the planning board, who has done just a great service to both with the town board and also with this board. He's brought a wealth of experience for 20 years serving the town of Mooresville in these capacities. And certainly for our board, he'll be sorely missed as he brings a lot of good perspective and experience from those other roles. So, we'll miss Mitch. But, thank you. I'd like to read a couple of opening comments regarding remarks and comments to the, both the planning board and also to the agenda items. At first, regarding public comment. At our first meeting each month, we set aside some time to allow public comment from our citizens or anyone wanting to address the board. Each speaker is given three minutes in which to comment. Speakers are expected to be civil and respectful to the board in their language and presentation. It is the board's practice not to respond or engage in conversations with anyone who speaks in order to give the speaker the full amount of time to voice their concerns. If you raise a matter you would like addressed either by the board or by the town staff, please leave your name and contact information with the board's administrative assistant and someone will contact you. This evening, that would be Becca. Please understand state law prohibits us from discussing employee personal matters with you. And then, public comment as part of the public hearing. Unlike public comment regarding general matters held at the beginning of our first meeting of the month, public comment as part of a public hearing is meant to specifically address a particular agenda item being considered by the board. Those wishing to speak must sign up prior to the meeting online or by calling the town clerk. A public hearing entails a staff presentation of 15 minutes, an applicant presentation of 15 minutes, with both the staff and applicant having additional time to address any questions from the board. At the end of these presentations, I will call on the citizens who have signed up prior to the meeting. Each speaker from the public will have three minutes to speak and may not bank or lend time to another unless four or more people supporting the same position designate a single speaker to represent them. In such case, the designated speaker will be given six minutes to speak to the board. The total time for public comment will be limited to 30 minutes or the first 10 speakers, whichever comes first. Once public comment ends, the applicant will have five minutes for rebuttal. Thank you. I don't believe we had anybody signed up for general public comment tonight, Becca, that I'm aware of from what Ann sent out. So, adjustments to the agenda, item five. I think we would have an adjustment made for swearing in the new board members that are at least here tonight. I know that Ms. Campbell was reappointed. And then, we have Laura Temple. Oh, well, Greg, please come, please come have a seat.
Sure.
So, Mr. Wilson, we need a motion to make that change to the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Then I would accept the motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Katz. I have a second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Campbell. All in favor?
Aye.
Then we'll make a change to the agenda for the swearing in of the new board members and the reappointed board member. Will you be guiding that process?
Yes, sir. So, we're gonna, one at a time, come up, start with Ms. Campbell, to come over here and meet the oath of office we have. And then, Ms. Jane Crosby here will notarize the bottom of it.
I, Roslyn, do solemnly swear, do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the, to the state of North Carolina and to the Constitution, constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of the state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a member of the planning board. So help me God.
I, Laura Temple, do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitutions and the laws of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a member of the planning board.
Sorry, Ms. Campbell, we need you to sign. Welcome. Thank you very much. Let's go.
I, Greg Perez, do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a member of the planning board.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wilson. And with that, we'd certainly like to congratulate Mr. Perez, Ms. Temple, and also Ms. Campbell for your reappointment. Good to have you all with us, and thank you for your service. Mr. Wilson, any other adjustments needed for the agenda?
Uh, no, sir, that is it.
With no further adjustments to the agenda, then do I have a motion to adopt the rest of the agenda as written? A motion from Ms. Cooper. Second, from Mr. Brady. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move to consideration of approval of minutes from June 13th.
So moved, we approve.
Have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any old business?
No, sir, we do not have any tonight.
With that, then we'll move to agenda item nine, which is new business. And that is consider the zoning request, RZ 2023-03, to update the official zoning map to address inconsistencies associated with eight sites across the town's corporate limits and ETJ.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is David Cole. I'm a planner with the town of Mooresville. And this is the third...
Are there any...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, thank you, Mr. Cole. Forgive me. Any conflicts of interest for any board members? With none being, please proceed.
Thank you, sir. This rezoning request is initiated by staff, and this is the third round of addressing errors on our zoning map that have occurred over time. This is by far the largest that we've brought before you. So, this is addressing seven sites in our zoning jurisdiction. So, based on research, this is all information from board minutes and review of old zoning maps. So, the inconsistencies we're hoping to address tonight are all based on action that the board took prior. We have notified all property owners of the sites themselves and adjacent property owners per state requirements. So, a quick overview of the sites before you tonight. We have the Atwater Landing subdivision to the north of our jurisdiction, the Townhome Community waterfront at Langtree, small parcels in the Isaac property and Belk property, the Alcove-Langtree property, which is another small parcel off Alcove Road. Langtree Devco is a 17-acre peninsula located on the future east-west connector. And finally, the Bloom Road property is the one out along Brawley School Road. So, the first site is the, a portion of the Atwater Landing neighborhood. So, as you can see here, it constitutes common open space and one cul-de-sac along Hornbeam Lane. This is about 20 acres in size, and it's located in Ward Four. So, Atwater Landing, currently, these areas don't have any zoning, or at least the district is undetermined. So, these should be displaying residential low intensity, or RLI zoning, which translates from the old R3. So, when these were added to the zoning establishment request back in 2017, these were never added to the zoning map at that time. So, that's why we need to add back RLI to match the rest of the neighborhood, which is residential in character. We do consider this consistent with all five of our decision standards for rezoning requests. And moving on to the next site, the waterfront at Langtree, the back portion is currently displaying conditional zoning. That's about 9.15 acres in size, and it is also located in Ward Four. So, currently, it's displaying Village Center conditional, and we are requesting corridor mixed use on the property to match the front of the neighborhood. So, the applicant did come forward in 2016 with a buy right request to go to Village Center, but when the zoning map was updated, this was updated to show conditional zoning. So, unfortunately, we don't have conditions associated with it, so we're looking to restore the error. Village Center translates to corridor mixed use in the new UDO. And again, we find this consistent with all five of our decision standards, including the One Mooresville Plan. Third, we have a small 0.17-acre triangle of property off Reinhardt Road. This is the Isaac property. It's located in Ward Two. Again, this, this small triangle is listed as undetermined. We are hoping to restore residential limited service on the property. All old zoning maps from 2013 back show R2 zoning on the site, but an update in 2014 unfortunately left it off entirely. So, we're hoping to go back and restore RLS, which is the new UDO designation for R2. And as you can see, there is R2 zoning adjacent to the site, which is adjacent to the Selma Burke Middle School. Again, we find this consistent with all five decision standards, including the One Mooresville So, next, we have the Belk property, which is a very small, again, 0.17-acre tract located just off Statesville Highway along Belk Road. It is located in Ward Two, and it is proposed to be included in the Shepherd's Farm subdivision, which has site plan approval. So, this small piece is listed as undetermined. This, we believe, occurred when the site was annexed, but this small property didn't make it into the zoning establishment for the Greater Shepherd's Farm neighborhood. So, we are looking to establish RLS to match the surrounding area, including the rest of the proposed neighborhood. And again, we do find this consistent with all five decision standards for the One Mooresville So, next, we have a small 0.63-acre parcel at the end of Edgeway Road, which is off Langtree, or, I'm sorry, Alcove Road. This is located in Ward One. So, currently, the map is showing undetermined zoning. Like the others, we're looking to establish RLS. So, it does look like in 2016, based on the minutes, the town board established R2 zoning when the property came into the town's jurisdiction. But again, the map in 2016 was never updated to show this. So, we're looking for RLS zoning to match what was approved. This one, we do find a slight inconsistency with the One Mooresville Plan, though we do find it meets all four other decision standards. So, the One Mooresville Plan does show this property as mixed-use corridor. RLS zoning is lower density and more residential in character than mixed-use corridor calls for, but RLS does align with the rural character of Edgeway Road. So, we do feel that it's the more appropriate zoning district for the area. Along with this request, we are recommending amending the One Mooresville Plan to show Peninsula Residential, which is the yellow color that you see adjacent to the west. Next, we have the Langtree Devco property located along the future east-west connector. This is a 17-acre parcel located in Ward One. So, this property was the subject of a larger rezoning that included the two tracts to the southwest, including the Corvid planned campus. So, this action in 2018 established Village Center by right on this property, but it was accidentally reflected as conditional, even though only the planned campus portion where Corvid is located should have been shown as conditional. So, we are looking to establish by right corridor mixed use on the property, which would be in keeping with the intent of the original approval. CM also matches the other properties along the proposed east-west connector. We do find this consistent with all five decision standards. This area is primarily shown as employment center on the One Mooresville Plan, and CM zoning is mixed use and supports those sorts of uses that we look for in the area. And finally, this is the last one. Bloom Road, located at the corner of Bloom and Brawley. So, this property, 10 acres in size, Ward Four, was associated with the rezoning for the residential neighborhood to the north. So, currently, the zoning is RMXC, which is vested from the old ordinance. So, we are requesting by right corridor mixed use on the property. So, the 2017 rezoning action, we believe the intent was to make this a by right property, but it was captured in the conditional zoning, which restricts the site to commercial use. So, there is a proposed multifamily development on this site that has made its way through to construction documents. We're hopeful that we can fix this zoning error to allow it to continue. The by right CMX was the intent of the zoning district on this site. So, CM is the closest associated in the UDO. And again, we find this consistent with all five of our decision standards. The One Mooresville Plan shows this property inside a Village Center node, which calls for higher intensity mixed-use development. So, that concludes the review of these seven sites. I'm happy to take any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Does the board have any questions?
Mr. Cole, go back to number five. I have a question. Just on the last part of five. So, we're, we're gonna change, does, does the change here impact any of the other property? I, I understand we're changing the zoning for this property. When you went through it, we're going to Peninsula Residential. For what?
So, the Peninsula Residential change would only be this subject property along Edgeway?
Just that property?
Yes, sir.
And how does that align with what else is there?
So, this would, based on the context of the street, Peninsula Residential makes more sense. So, this is, these other properties along Edgeway between the subject property and Alcove Road, they're all single-family residences. They're currently in Iredell County zoning. So, if this subject property, if we were to take it to Peninsula Residential, that would more closely match the character than the mixed-use corridor designation. But this change tonight would only affect the subject property, none of the other residences.
I see. All, all the red is Iredell County.
Uh, the red, this is our future land use map, which includes a larger area that includes...
That's all mixed use.
Uh, yes. So, the red is mixed use, yellow is Peninsula.
So, we're actually pushing it toward the county zoning by making it Peninsula Residential?
Well, it's currently in our zoning jurisdiction, and it's here to stay.
But I mean, it's just closer to that than the other.
Yes, sir.
And that's the reason, so that it's not tied into the commercial side of it?
It would be pushing it closer to residential, lower-density residential character.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Any additional questions by the board? Okay. Thank you very much. With that, I'll open the public comment portion, as we have one individual signed up, Mr. Saranaki, to speak to the board.
Yes. Mr. Cole, before I insert my comments on this topic...
Oh, okay.
But I do have the next item, it comes on the next topic.
And, and you're registered also with the next agenda item. Okay. Well, thank you very much. With that, we, we don't have, you have to be signed up in advance for public comment, I'm sorry. With that, I'll close the public hearing portion and ask for any additional...
Wait, wait, there's more comments that were signed up.
Yes. I, I not only signed up online, I also called in and signed up.
I only have one that was presented to me, and that was, that was this gentleman.
Yeah, they, they were signed up, and that's a, a confirmation and everything.
I don't know.
Can I come and see your information, please?
Ma'am, we don't have a public comment portion without signups.
Where were you notified that you had to do that?
On the town website. It should give you guidance on how to sign up for any of the public comment portions, whether it's just the first one, which is simply to address the board for common items at each meeting, or whether to address specific agenda items as a public comment.
The letter that I got in the mail stated that I had three minutes. It never once said I needed to visit the website, or sign up, or have any sort of instruction on what to do. It was just that I was being, I'm next to this, and I was given three minutes. So, where does that, where does it state that in, in Friday, that I have to go through your website or file to say that I'm done with this?
So, Mr. Chair, I can say that I personally signed the letter that went out to adjacent property owners. It had two pages, and it included instructions on how to sign up to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Again, we're certainly not trying to take away the public's opportunity to speak at these meetings, but we do have a process for it, so that we can keep everything contained.
Did Carrie say you're able to speak? If so, I think that's fine.
This site's no longer, and we talked to somebody about it.
I have no problem if you want to speak, if it's allowed.
There is a site situation, we've handed the sign up to teach you to a page of, of the norm. Were you able to find the confirmation?
Uh, I found one for the town, the planning board. As I said, I signed up at the same time on the phone with the young lady online while we were doing it, and it took three phone calls to do it.
Well, if you signed up on that, let's go ahead. If you'll come to the podium, state your name and address. We'll give you time to make those comments. I'll reopen the public comment portion for this. Thank you.
My name is Jack Benyon. I live at 263 Beaton Path Road in Mooresville. When we saw the agenda, I was totally confused about the 9A Bloom Road property, the rezoning request going from RMXC to CM. On this person's tax bill, as of June, or January 1st, it is already listed as CM. In the UDO dated November 7th, 2022, page 12, shows that RMX is being transitioned to TN Traditional Neighborhood, not CM. On the town zoning map, which was what was posted, if you look at it, the underlying partial is all pink, which says CM, and the purple overlay is setting conditional, conditional zoning. So, what really was the partial to begin with? And even to be more confused, we sat in this very room years ago to lose a fight on a seven-story mini strip center that was being, that was approved for that location at the time. And the current rumor is there is a plan for a three-story, 180-unit apartment slash condo on that location. So, across the way, we went from a 34-acre, 71 homes plus amenities. Across the street, 21-acre, 108 rental homes plus amenities, and now possibly 180 units on a 10-acre partial. Doesn't seem to be following with what you've already approved there. This needs to stop if those rumors are correct. There are mornings on Brawley when you backed up for over a mile from Oak Tree back almost to Bloom and the Food Lion, last Friday at noon, and I realize it was noon, but it still took three traffic lights off of Brawley to make a left-hand turn onto Williamson. After sitting through many of the meetings on that 21-acre site and the traffic surveys that seemed to change at each meeting, one of the last things we were told from their person was, we really don't need a survey until the commercial partial gets here. So, if this partial now goes to residential with 180 units, will there actually be a traffic survey? There's enough traffic coming off that dead-end street, the two dead-end streets with Bloom right now, that backs Bloom up coming on to Brawley. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. With that, I'll close the public comment portion. Mr. Cole, anything that you have to address, any of the statements made?
Yes, sir. So, the zoning on our official zoning map, which is available on the town website, shows the Bloom, Bloom property as conditional. The underlying districts that you see, that you may see on the county tax map or on the tax office records are not entirely reliable. The town's official zoning map is the one that we put forth as the official zoning. And this is in relation to our update of the zoning map as, you know, records change over time. So, you know, we're hopeful that, you know, we can continue to ensure that the zoning map remains reliable moving forward. I can say also that the apartment community proposed to this site on Bloom is, that's that site is not what we're discussing tonight, that that's not connected to this zoning action. We're looking to change the zoning map independent of what may or may not be proposed there. We're just looking to take it to what the original approval should have been.
Okay, so these cleanup functions should make clear understanding of these specific sites and the zoning applied to them much clearer?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Once done, okay. Is there any additional, or are there any additional questions from the board or any board discussion on the matter? If not, then I would entertain a motion. And, Mr. Cole, if I understood correctly, would, if it were in favor, would it need to be a motion approving future land use amendment to take care?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So that's number two on that specific option?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you for that clarification.
So is this it? This is all we get to do as a public?
I'm sorry, ma'am, that we can't have a conversation between the audience and the board.
I'm happy to take any questions you may have after the meeting. Thank you.
And you will have this, regardless of the decision here, this would go to the town board, and you will have additional time to speak there at the town board as well.
I appreciate that, ma'am.
I'll look to the board for a motion in the matter?
Before I make a motion, I just want to make sure I'm clear. This is not to establish new zoning. This is to correct errors on the zoning map, so they're consistent with what was previously approved.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. I will make a motion. Staff recommends approval of RZ 2023-03 with the amendment to the future land use map, because this overall request is consistent with the town's One Mooresville Plan. Specifically, the request to establish RLS zoning on the Alcove Langtree property does not align with the future land use plan designation of mixed-use corridor. Separately, the request to restore RLI to the Atwater Landing Properties, CM to the waterfront at Langtree Properties, RLS to the Isaac Property, RLS to the Belk Property, CM to the Langtree Development Property, and CM to the Bloom Property remains in alignment with the projected density, character, and surrounding area context projected by the future land use character and land use map. Furthermore, the request is reasonable and in the public interest, because in all cases, the application restores the correct zoning district based upon past board actions on properties that better aligns with the existing and/or future uses, removes nonconformities, and is more compatible with the surrounding development pattern, site conditions, and surrounding context. As part of this action, the future character and land use map should be updated to reflect neighborhood residential designation for Belk Road Property and Peninsula Residential for Alcove Langtree Property.
Thank you, Mr. Katz. So we have a motion to approve with future land use amendment from Mr. Katz. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Brady. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So the motion carries, and we would make the recommendation to approve and recommend that to the town board. And you will have a chance at the town board to address the matter as well.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. With that, we would move to Agenda Item 9B, which is to consider text amendment 2023-03 and amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance for Chapters 2, 5, and 9 to add erosion and sediment control standards, definitions, and related requirements. Mr. Wilson?
Good evening again. So before this evening, we do have a proposed amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance. This is to add erosion and sedimentation control into the ordinance holistically, but first I'll ask for any conflicts of interest for this.
I'll ask the board for any conflicts of interest in the matter?
No.
Being none, please proceed.
So this is a staff-initiated text amendment. And as I mentioned, this is to include provisions that would allow the town to regulate erosion and sedimentation control. Currently, that is a function carried out by Iredell County through a 2009 agreement the town had with the county for the county to do this function for us. This is the only aspect of horizontal land development that the county administers on our behalf. And as I'm sure you're all aware, starting September 5th, technically, the 4th is a holiday. So Tuesday, September 5th, the town of Mooresville will start our own building permitting department. So that has been underway. We had to provide two-years' notice per state statute to the county. So that happened about two years ago. So starting in September, we will have building permitting for the town, for everything in the town. So currently, that is a function Iredell County provides for the town as well. Once building permitting goes live locally, erosion and sediment control is the last piece left to any private land development controlled by the county. So we are trying to consolidate everything to make sure the town is providing all of those services in-house for town residents. So in order to add erosion and sediment control, there are three sections that were modified or proposed to be modified in the UDO, and you do have these as your attachment. Chapter 2, Administration Chapter, this covers how permits are processed. This would be a staff-level approval. These would be reviewed at the same time we review site plans. So currently, we review site plans for all construction details. We also look at stormwater management. And again, this is the one piece that we do not look at. So erosion and sediment control is a temporary thing that happens during construction. So while a site is under construction, these requirements help protect adjacent properties and adjacent waterways from being degraded by sediment running off the property, from flooding issues with dirt and mud coming off of sites. I'm sure some of you know around town, there's some development that's happened, and there've been blowouts during big rains, and you've seen mud getting on streets, and that's what this protects against. So this makes sure that we can have local regulations here in the town where we can ensure sediment fences put in and necessary measures are put in place during construction. Once construction's finished, these things leave the site after the site is stabilized, so planted, to make sure the dirt is not exposed. And then all the measures protecting the sedimentation can leave the site. So this is really for construction time only, so it's temporary. Stormwater management is the permanent thing that happens on the site, to manage stormwater and make sure it's released appropriately. But Chapter 2 adds how this process works, that it's reviewed by staff, it's approved in conjunction with site plans, what happens, you know, how long they're valid for. It follows site plan, so everything lines up with ordinance as it is today. I should have backed up and said, 95% of this is, of this text amendment is from the state model ordinance. That is a very common ordinance that localities adopt. The county adopted the straight, just about straight model ordinance from the state. So we looked at the county's ordinance, as well as Hunter'sville ordinance and another community's ordinance in addition to the state model ordinance to draft these standards. But the vast majority of this is straight state model ordinance that DEQ publishes for local governments to use. Chapter 5 is really where the meat of this lies. Chapter 5 is our Development Standards section of the Unified Development Ordinance, and this would create a brand-new section, 5.16. And this is really where a lot of the information exists, how long ground can be uncovered, what kind of slopes there are to make sure it's seeded properly, and all of those items. Chapter 9 is all the definitions related to these sections. These would just be embedded into our current Chapter 9, but these definitions are for terms directly related to erosion and sediment control. And you'll see those in here as well. So when we do amendments to our UDO, we look at five standards that are listed in the UDO for text amendments. And staff believes that this is consistent with our comprehensive plan and adopted plans. It is consistent with UDO. It doesn't create any conflicts as well. The change in conditions is, as I mentioned, we're adopting building permitting here in the fall, and this would be the last piece left in the land development process that the county would administer for us. And this is something that has been in our plan for a while now with the town board, wanting to create the one-stop shop. So right now, we have, we actually, Planning Department moved last week. I should mention that, by the way. So we're in a different building. We're no longer downstairs here, but we are at the old police department. And one major aspect of that move is to create a one-stop shop. So we have Planning, we have the Fire Marshals, and we have the Building Permitting Office. So all in one building, in one half of the building, actually. So when a development plan comes in, every person in the town who touches that is in one space. So adding erosion and sediment control function into that space as well. Anyone who has a project can come in and meet with every single person in the town in one room, which will be very nice moving forward for some efficiencies. So creating a one-stop shop also is a factor in looking at bringing this in-house. So staff does recommend approval of this. We do believe it's consistent with our One Mooresville Plan in providing a high-quality environment in the town and protecting our natural resources. So specifically, they help with the prevention of pollution by sedimentation, and it is in the public interest. And I'd be happy to, you know I love text amendments, so I'd be happy to walk through any of these you'd like or take any questions you may have.
Well, thank you, Mr. Wilson. With that, I would open up the board for any discussion and questions for Mr. Wilson in the matter?
Mr. Wilson, now the process, they would go back to the county, and it would go back and forth, correct?
Yes, sir. So today, the process is developer would submit a concept plan with us. We would review a concept plan, approve a concept plan. It would move into site plan. They would submit their site plan to us and their erosion and sediment control plan to the county. Before we can issue their site plan approval and do their pre-construction meeting, they have to have their erosion and sediment control plan approved. We schedule a pre-construction meeting on-site with the developer. The county also does. We try to coordinate that, but it does not usually work out. So then the developer's having two pre-construction meetings, or they have one and think they can start construction without having the second one, which has happened on several occasions. So then the developer starts construction. During construction, the county inspects only for erosion and sediment control items. We do all the other inspections. If there's an issue, and we see an issue or get a complaint, if it's erosion and sediment control-related, we have to send it up to the county. We can't do anything about it. So we can see a development happening and mud pouring out into our street, a town-owned street, and we have no authority to stop it. The county has to come down and work with the developer to get it, whatever issue is resolved and the street cleaned up. Same with an NCDOT street, same with sedimentation running into the lake. We have no, today, we have no legal authority to stop someone from dumping sediment into the lake because the county has this control. If this is adopted locally, we have that authority to make sure that doesn't happen, make sure it stops, and make sure it's remedied if it does happen after the fact. So it is definitely disjointed currently because the county's taking part of that process.
And, Mr. Cole, I believe, you have a question?
Just curious, so the town does some inspections now?
Yes, sir, we do a lot of inspections now, yes, sir.
And we're going to be doing more in addition to just the erosion control? We're going to take over the whole process, right?
Yes.
Or is it just the erosion control part we're taking over?
So for horizontal development, it's only erosion control. Vertical building, we are also taking over. So we will have building inspectors also out on-site inspecting all the vertical building construction elements as well.
So my curiosity question is, how is the staffing going? Is it, are we going to be ready in September?
Yes, sir. So for both this and the building permitting, so for the one-stop-shop creation, we, right now, are hiring a civil engineer. We are going to put out an ad for engineer/technician. And we will have, we currently have one construction inspector, and we're advertising for two more to make sure that all of our construction items can be covered. As you all, everyone is well-aware, growth is fast-paced here, and we've historically only had one construction inspector looking at how sidewalks are put in, curbs, water lines, sewer lines, roads are built. So we're tripling that. The intent is to make sure we have adequate staff to cover this, as well as also make sure we have enough staff to inspect everything we need to inspect that's being built in the town.
Thank you.
Stand.
The self-inspections, does the county currently utilize self-inspections?
Yes, that is in the state model ordinance. That is something that is extremely common throughout the state, and the county does have the same language.
Are there any additional questions for Mr. Wilson?
Danny, how long would it take us to get to stormwater management?
So we have stormwater management today. That is something that we currently review and regulate.
Any additional questions? If not, then I will open the public comment portion for this agenda item, and I think we have Mr. Saraneki. Again, if you state your name and address at the podium, please, and you will have three minutes.
Yes, sir, my name is Nick Saraneki. I live on 458 Midway Lake Road in Mooresville, North Carolina.
Thank you very much.
And erosion control is a huge thing in this county. And at Mooresville, this is an extremely important topic. Right now, I'm recommending Option 3 to personally deny or postpone this measure at this time, mainly because I work in private development. I've worked with Danny's team. It's a fantastic team. Mooresville's fantastic. Iredell County's been fantastic for a lot of these things. We work on projects from 1 acre to 100 acres. And each project needs to be, there are different tiers. Iredell County has different tiers. So there's small-scale development, there's large-scale development, and that's consistent in North Carolina, Virginia, Pennsylvania, multiple, multiple states that we work in throughout the area. Right now, our plan that's in front of you today only outlines half-acre carpalage. It doesn't state any differential between a half-acre, 10 acres, 100 acres. So it could be an industrial warehouse, or it could be a home on Lake Norman. It's treated exactly the same. And right now, quite honestly, that's a, that's not great for Mooresville, and it's not great for constituents, because to the staff's questions, that it takes a huge staff to actually go and implement all these things. And from our side, it's actually probably one of the number-one complaints we receive as developers or contractors, is between noise and erosion control, number one and two from the public. So from our perspective, I just wanted to hear what the planning, what the staff had on-staff, because it's going to place undue burden on our planning staff. And from our perspective, we just don't want to have Mooresville to have a bad name going into a one-stop-shop. So we want it to continue to be, you can come in, you can get your permit, you get to go to work, and Mooresville's fantastic like it is, unlike Mecklenburg County. Like, that's a huge thing for our county and inspections and going forward. So I just want to understand the financial implication to our Mooresville County from a burden to our staff, for inspectors that we have. It doesn't implement any training or certifications, which is a very standard thing throughout any state in the United States. Our plan doesn't outline what certifications they need to be doing it. It outlines that you're going to be doing self-inspections, which is not appropriate for 100-acre mass, million-square-foot warehouses. It needs to be a third party. It should be, it should be further defined so that parks like off 801, that's the industrial part from Mooresville, you shouldn't be self-inspecting. It should be certified erosion control inspectors on-site. And it does almost create a one-stop-shop. Again, we still have to get septic permits from Iredell County. Currently, unless I'm mistaken, you still have to go get your well and septic in order to get a building permit in the county, in many homes, including my own. You still need to go to Iredell County for that. So we're close, but we're not quite there in that. Those are my things. I think it was a fantastic plan. I just, it needs to be a little bit further defined.
I think that's good commentary. Thank you very much. Mr. Wilson, you have some comments to address some of those items?
Yes, sir. So this text amendment is only for the text in the UDO. There are several other things, as was mentioned, training, staffing, budgeting. All of that is not in here, right? This is only the text that's added to our Unified Development Ordinance, that is the regulatory document that we have that governs land development. So all those other things, we have, as I mentioned, we are hiring an engineer. We're hiring an engineer/technician. We're hiring two additional construction inspectors. We're taking a very close look at workload and staffing. I didn't mention, this will be added to our IDT Plans Portal, so all inspections will be through there as well, which is the same one we're using for our building permitting. So we're trying to consolidate and make sure we have as efficient of a process as we can, and then make sure we have adequate staffing to administer everything and look at everything. As I mentioned, currently, we have one construction inspector. The only thing we don't inspect today is erosion and sediment control, and we have one construction inspector. So we're adding two more in the next few months. So that will drastically increase our capabilities on the inspection side. The goal also is to have our engineering... The goal also is to have our engineer/technician be able to go out on-site and do inspections as well if there's a larger issue afoot. If there are major complaints, or we notice erosion sedimentation control measures are failing, then either the engineer or the engineer/technician can go out and also make sure whatever's being done on-site is actually fixing the problem and cleaning up the issue. It is a half-acre proposal, the county does have a tiered approach. When the intent, if you're in the watershed, it's half an acre. In a state-regulated watershed, it's half an acre in the county. We took this across the board, half acre is a half acre anywhere. The intent of this is to prevent degradation of streams. It doesn't matter if your stream is in a state-regulated watershed or not. A stream is an important environmental asset regardless of if it's leading to a public drinking source. So the state watersheds are only looking at public water source locations and protecting those. So this text is not intended to follow those lines, this is intended to make sure all streams and water bodies nearby are protected, which is why we just did half an acre across the board, because the county currently does half an acre in the watershed.
Are there any, Mr. Brady?
Mr. Wilson, this is important because the county will turn this off on September, the first part of September, correct?
No.
They will no longer be involved with what we do here.
No, sir, they will stop doing building permitting. The county will continue erosion sediment control permitting inspections as long as we let them. So we do, we are under no obligation to do this. I should have mentioned as well, the state actually has to give us the authority to do this. So DEQ, they have a board that votes to determine if your local jurisdiction can do this work and can handle this work. The draft ordinance has been sent to DEQ staff for their comment, I've not gotten their feedback yet, but we're waiting for that feedback. The earliest, assuming this moves forward, assuming it's approved, the earliest we could take this on would be mid-November. That's when the next state board meeting is to be held. We've never been through this process before. The town of Mooresville has never done erosion sedimentation control before. Before the county took it over in 2009, the state did it on our behalf. So DEQ inspectors were reviewing plans and doing site inspections here prior to 2009. So this is new for the town. So I don't know if, assuming it, you know, at that meeting, they say yes, we can take this over, I don't know if they say yes, starting tomorrow, November 16th, or if yes, they say yes, starting June 1st. I have no idea. So we're going in with the assumption it'll be end of year if we get the approval to do this locally, but I don't know for certain.
Mr. Cole?
Just to make sure I'm thinking right here, we're not going to have any well and septic, are we?
No, sir. So it is true, anything with the health department, with well and septic does go to the county. That will be that way forever, as far as I know.
We'll have that on the record.
But it is very unusual for us to have developments with well and septic. There are many homes in town that are on septic or well, or both. New development, it's pretty rare to have well or septic.
Thank you.
But it definitely could happen.
Are there any additional questions? Any board discussion on the matter? Then if not, I would entertain a motion at this time?
I'll make a motion that we recommend the town board approval of TA-2023-03, reapproving the language as presented. The amendments are consistent with the town's One Mooresville Plan. Specifically, the amendments assist with the prevention of pollution by sedimentation. Furthermore, the request is reasonable and in the public interest because they assist in protecting property values, wildlife, habitats, soils, construction, and water bodies.
So we have a motion to approve by Mr. Brady. Do I have a second? Have a second from Mr. Hooper? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Then the motion carries, and we would be recommending approval to the town board.
Thank you very much.
With that, I'll move to our next agenda item, which I believe are administrative comments.
Yes, sir. So just an update, we've had two town board meetings since your last meeting. So in June, we had a CZ 2023-02, which was 136 Rocky River Storage Project that the town board did approve. That was indoor self-storage off of Rocky River Road, kind of behind Food Line. So that project was approved. On their agenda was also a text amendment 2023-01 for accessory structure sales, so that was continued by the town board. So they will hear that next month, but just wanted to let you know about June. July, our meeting was last week. So town board, just so you're aware, I know this doesn't come to you, but the town board did vote to update their annexation and utility extension policy, mostly regarding emergency utility connections. We had a recent emergency utility connection where a well failure happened, and when that happens, the town manager is empowered to connect someone to the town water system before the town board votes, because we want to make sure everyone has clean drinking water. So the requirement is then the applicant has to submit a voluntary annexation petition, and the town board ratifies the utility connection and approves the annexation. At that time, of course, we have to establish zoning on a property. So an issue came up where someone was attempting to upzone their property. It was currently, it was a county residential, and they had requested commercial from us. So the town board really felt strongly that if you have an emergency situation, you should keep your same zoning across the board. The intent of that process is not to rezone your property, it is to make sure you have clean drinking water. So they asked staff to go and look at the annexation, voluntary annexation and utility extension policy, and add language where an applicant has 90 days to submit their annexation petition post utility connection, and that is a staff-initiated rezoning. And we pick the zoning that most areas, the county zoning, for that property. So the applicant doesn't have to pay for the rezoning because really, they just need water, and that we make sure it is not a tool being used to rezone a property for a different use. So I just wanted to let you know about that.
Good, thank you.
One you may hear about, again, this will not come to you, but I just wanted to let you know, well, none of these three will come to you, actually. We had a right-of-way abandonment slash road closure request for a portion of Thunder Road. So Thunder Road is a relatively short industrial road, and it ends in a cul-de-sac. The way it was platted, the road was built, and then the plat was recorded years ago, the plat and the road don't match. So the right-of-way actually does not align with the road that was built. So we had a project coming in at the end of the road, trying to develop property that was actually in the right-of-way. So they've submitted an application to modify that right-of-way to match what was actually built, so that process is underway. It requires us to notify, we have to do advertising for four consecutive weeks before a public hearing can be held, so it's a different process. Again, that will not come before you, but I just wanted to let you know because signs will be out on that road, just so you're aware of what's happening there. And that is just to fix that problem with the road not matching the right-of-way. And then also, the town board adopted our CDBG plan at their July meeting. So this was a process that started several months ago, was very intensive, involved a couple of you all, and our Community Development Advisory Committee, which is another town-appointed board. We contracted with Centralina Council of Governments, they helped us through the process, and going through this process allows the town to qualify for federal funding on an annual basis directly from the Housing and Urban Development Department and the US Housing and Urban Development Department. So this will open us up for funding. This year, we're expecting a little over $222,000 in funding for activities allowed under that grant. Those are really designed for low-to-mature-income households and elderly households under those guidelines.
That was the meeting where we were going to, is that correct?
Yeah, we were there.
Okay.
We were at one of the meetings.
Oh, the Centralina meeting, yes.
Yeah.
Yep. That's right, I forgot we had that, workday meeting.
So that's done on, Danny?
It is done, it is going to HUD this week.
Great.
So assuming they like everything they see, then we should be good to go, starting September 1st will be our program year.
Very good.
So just wanted to let you know about that as well, because that was a big project. And for those of you that don't know, that the town hit 50,000 population in the last census, so that is the trigger that allowed us to go through this process. Before you hit 50,000, you cannot become CDBG entitled as a community. There are some, it's not that black and white, of course, because it's federal guidelines, but that was our trigger that allowed us to go through this process.
Did we have to decide, did we have to decide what we were going to use those funds for? I can't remember what, before you could apply, or does, I don't remember what the process was?
So with this, this was an oddball year because we're new. So with the plan, it's a five-year plan, we also have our one-year plan, our annual action plan.
Okay, that's right.
We have top priorities that we have to do for the next five years, and housing activities was number one priority, and that's what we were really focusing most of the money on this year. The town board approved 189,000, 189,000 to do critical home repair, and then a little over 33,000 for workforce development with Feed and See, which economic development activities was one of our top four as well. And then, as you can tell tonight, we have no private requests for rezonings or developments, so growth has definitely slowed down as far as projects coming in to our office. I'm assuming it's largely related to the economy and interest rates. So we are, residential numbers did drop, we're at an all-time low, not really, 14,348 dwelling units. That's a mix of multifamily and single-family, somewhere in the pipeline of initial plans submitted through construction. So for reference, we were 18,000 late last year. So we went through a process of culling old projects that had sat around and were not moving forward, so that has dropped down to 14,348. Less than half of those are multifamily, so 7,500 are single-family, about 6,800 are multifamily. And then we have about 4.2 million square feet of commercial in that same pipeline right now. So we still have growth, but not as fast-paced as it was.
Well, that's still a lot of activity.
October, we had 15 public hearings for projects last year, so we're not there, clearly, because last month, we just had a couple as well. I do want to make one last announcement. Maureen Colka, Maureen Gable, she has announced her retirement. So into this month, she will be retiring. She's been with us for almost 20 years. So definitely, those of you who've been on here for a while have worked with her, and encourage you to send her best wishes. So we're excited for her, but also sad to see her leave.
Well, likewise, she's been pleasant to have involved with planning, and we'll certainly miss her from the board's side.
And that was all I have, Mr. Che.
And that wraps up. Is there, are there any things, Ms. Austin?
Since we're on administrative items, I wanted to thank Colleen Howe, or actually, Spector, Spector. Now, she is our staff attorney, and our new members, I think, I didn't get to meet you, Mr. Perez, but I encourage you all to hang around just a minute after and introduce yourselves to us, both myself and Colleen, who's in the audience. She's going to be sitting in with you guys maybe a little more often. You've still got me, you don't get rid of me that easy, but she may be coming a little more. And then the other thing I wanted to just give for food for thought, we usually do some sort of educational entrance for new members. I can always do that for the full board if you feel like you need it, or you've sat through it, you've had enough, I can just do it for the two new members. So just a thought, and let me know your preferences.
Very good. Did you need that now?
No.
Okay. Any other discussion items from board members? Being none, then we would take a motion to close.
In honor of Mitch Abraham, I make a motion to close.
Thank you, Mr. Katz, and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Without any, then I'll call the meeting closed. And thank you, everyone, very much.